Phases where Greenwood Ave is created. This will just help minimize the impact on the facility. Dust control measures, compliant with all the ENS measures that have been designed, as well as regular street sweeping will be in effect to make sure that we do not degrade the quality of Madison Avenue and the surrounding streets. Truck traffic. So there were some questions regarding what type of truck traffic. During the core and shell of the site work activities, we will see some tri轴s, some flatbeds, elements like that, they're bringing in steel or other elements that allow the building to come out of the ground, or materials relative to the site work coming in and off-site. Once the structure is built, however, it'll largely become an interior fit-out, at which point the traffic will be largely mimicking what you already see on the hospital campus with routine delivery trucks for the interior components that go into the job. Other elements relative to the site, we are not going to have a tower crane. We thought in respect for the neighbors and the visual aesthetics that that would be much more impactful. So we're going to use mobile crawler cranes around the site. They have the ability to, obviously, be more mobile, thus with the name, but also to lower the mass to the boom when not in use, whereas a tower crane, that boom is always suspended. So we are not going to have that here, which will, I think, help with the overall visual aesthetics throughout construction. Trash, trash will be kept onsite in dumpsters, and it will be removed at a very regular cadence, daily, as the construction activities begin to pick up. It will not be stored outside of the construction-defined area. As far as the workforce onsite, the average workforce over the entire duration of construction is anticipated to be 100 workers. The discussions about parking, again, we've taken a phased approach to the site work. That's why there's that longer duration upfront, so that we're not taking significant amounts of parking offline. We have a very thoughtful and systematic approach, so we don't degrade the quality of care and accessibility to the facility. So with that comes that additional timeframe that we're looking at upfront. But with those 100 workers, they will be restricted to parking onsite. The 62 spots that are going to be at 27-seater on a temporary basis, and any additional overflow can go into the satellite, as discussed before, as there is overflow in available spaces in all the analysis that has been done. 27-seater, again, no heavy equipment, no material staging is going to be done there. It is going to be construction field offices. I think you've seen some of the visual look of what that's going to try to accomplish there. The lighting outside of the pole lights that Mr. Cortezia had mentioned are going to be in the front gravel lot. The rest of the lighting is anticipated to be on the mobile units themselves as part of the manufacturer-supplied units. The question was raised regarding lighting in the back paved section. The reality is, the professional staff, which tends to have longer hours, they will be parking up in the gravel lot, which is lit, and then the trades force will have first priority in the back of the lot. They tend to leave at a short duration onsite, so most often they will be off-site before it is dark, even in the winter months. As far as restrooms, that was a question that was raised. 27-seater offices, we will have restrooms in those facilities. They come in those prefabricated units. That will have a permanent sanitary tie-in, which will be documented for the life of that facility. Once we're done with the construction, that'll come offline and that'll all be restored as the offices are removed. And then as far as the restroom facilities for the trades force onsite, there will be mobile units that are provided with the intent to provide a temporary sanitary connection. The goal of being bathroom trailers in lieu of porta-johns, they're much more manageable. They have a much better aesthetic, and it'll provide a better quality than porta-johns and some of the challenges that sometimes come with those throughout construction. I believe that hits on most of the items that were outlined in the ERI letter, but if there's anything else, I can ask a question.
Which route do you foresee the larger truck vehicles bringing delivery equipment during the construction phase, where they'll be coming out of Route 38 up Madison?
The belief is that that is going to be the most prudent path of travel, is coming off of 38 up Madison and then into the entry of the site.
Which will be where, on Madison?
The entry to the site, the primary entry to the site will be on Madison. We're going to try to route as much of the traffic through there. There are some enabling phases where we're cutting in Greenwood Ave and doing some work along south of that intersection. There will be some intermittent traffic there for some of those pieces, but primary is going to be through Madison.
What did the county say about that, that they've been focused about since the county wrote?
The first line, probably zero.
Yeah, there was no mention about that, but I'm sure as part of the construction phase, sorry, I don't know if my mic's picking up. As part of the construction phase, and when we do the code of revenues, but then you mentioned, we're going to have to comply for that county permit, and I'm sure there's going to be some traffic control measures that are going to be submitted or reviewed by the county as well.
Anything else?
Will that, the proposed building, will that be at cut grade or a fill?
There is a small section where the mechanical space that Mr. Peters had talked about on the north end of the building, it's largely mechanical space, that is a small cut of about five feet, but the rest will be at grade net. The site is fairly neutral.
So you're going to be filling Greenwood when you come off of Madison, you're going to be filling that area?
Correct, right, and then we have the excavations from basin, so it's a fairly balanced site.
So then the tri轴s coming in as far as carrying fill material, that'd be minimal?
There will be, because there is subbase requirements for all of the paved areas that are going in, there is the paving, so there will be tri轴 traffic. I don't want to negate that that will occur, and very typical with a site, but it is not a heavy export site, because we don't have any significant excavations. So often, if you had a significant excavation, you would see tri轴 traffic constantly hauling out into that export site. You're not going to have as much as that here. You'll have a balance coming in and coming out. But there is still significant site work improvements throughout the project location.
And I'm understanding that this traffic, we're not going to have tri轴s rolling through downtown?
The intent is that primarily they will be routed up 38 as that will be the most prudent course.
Yeah, I was just going to bring up again, what type of controls do you have that you enforce that path? Because all things, understandably, do flow through on Hollywood Road Roads, but all those paths that come downtown also have alternate paths, so if you come in up 537, you get to a 638.
That's right.
If you're coming down, you're going to pull in a 541, you don't have to bypass 38. You can all get to 38 with some of the traverse downtown. And sometimes truck drivers, that shirt cut, it's a little thicker, but there's a big corner there, and it is a disturbance. So if there's any sort of mechanism you could put in place as being in charge of those operations, it would be advisable if they don't take 38.
Surely, as we go to bring in some contractors who are going to be responsible for those major deliveries, we can make sure that logistically that element is incorporated into their descopes and subcontract.
So you're going to be the continuing onsite construction manager personally?
I'll be there, correct.
Okay, so...
With the team, it's not just me.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not that good.
To Mr. Falcus' point, if there is an issue with drivers going through the downtown and a problem with that, would we address that if requested?
Correct, absolutely.
And then with respect to dumpsters and the trash onsite, you said that that's going to be contained. Every once in a while, this happens with certain developments, convenience stores, many other things. If there's trash migration, if there's an issue with that, they can contact you as well and forget complaints?
Yep, that's not a problem. It'll be all contained within the site, and if it's non-site work-generated debris, where you tend to have a lot of, let's say, packing materials that can be uplifted with heavy wind, we cover our dumpsters, so try to prevent that.
Steve, I think you mentioned also we'll have a point of contact and permanent information.
Correct, correct. So we'll have permanent points of contact, that'll be representatives from Target Construction, myself, which would be myself, Aegis and Virtuous, so if there is ever anything that comes up from a public standpoint, at least there's a direction in which people can find that contact information.
Other questions, comments, or comments, Mr. Boyd? I'd say none, I think it was what? I do have another question, it would not be for you, but I suppose it might be for Mr. Colgomzal. We, as we're looking at the plan, there are some concerns about the potential impacts of the construction activity and more generally the runoff after construction is over. As you move across Greenwood Ave toward Jefferson Ave, and then it's not in the picture here, but you have Lois Lane, I mean, it is sloped and pitched towards what looks like the rail trail or maybe the creek, but so are there going to be any retaining walls that are incorporated into this project? Have you proposed to ensure that the neighboring properties are not impacted by runoff brought that's generated from your activities?
Sure, that's a fair point. Regarding Jefferson, there's no real improvements on there. The only stormwater improvements that are done are within the site of Lot A. There's already existing infrastructure in place that the proposed infrastructure in that position lot and manager lot is being configured and ties into it. As part of Mr. Alimen's letter, he would like to see video inspection of that existing line that we're tying into, that we're gladly to provide. Regarding any, well, I'll touch upon the small-scale basin that's adjacent to Lot B, that's managing additional runoff with providing groundwater recharge as well as water quality for the expansion of Greenwood Ave. There's no retaining walls in place. One of the concerns that Brown to County Souls had mentioned is the steep slip against it. What we have provided is that there's no emergency spillway happening along that stream that, or that embankment stream that, because we don't want any possible future erosion to happen, so what we have provided is an oversized outlet structure, because all the runoff that's being collected in that basin treat the water quality storms that any storms created that overflow into the large-scale basin directly. So in reality, you should only really see about a foot of water, a foot and a half at the largest storms peaks in that basin. And regarding the retaining wall, the only retaining wall that's proposed onsite is adjacent to the Greenwood Ave extension and has really to hold up the grade for that road extension. And all those measures have been submitted as we are against wetland-sensitive areas as well as buffers. Those barriers permits have been through the NJDP's, Freshwater Wetland Bureau, as well as the flood hazard areas, and those permits have been received, actually recorded with the county, and those copies have been provided to your professionals as well as the township.
Great, and what is the distance from the proposal where the curve is at the additional degree of, what is the distance from that curve to where it does?
To the retaining wall?
The sheer drop off?
Yeah, so from the face of curb to the fence is 16 feet and 17 feet to the retaining wall. And that's actually one of the variances that I'm going to highlight is the, it's an accessory structure in that open space lot to any speed. The code requires 25 feet, but we're proposing 16 and 17, only because we don't want to further encroach into those environmentally sensitive areas. You are restricted to a certain degree how much you can expand out to it. I believe your private concern is, say, a vehicle negates and hops that curb. We did actually look through the analysis to see if that area warranted a guide rail, and it does not. Through the NJDOT's manual, there's specification tables that show the recommended full slopes and cut slopes where a guide rail, a guide rail would be warranted, and in this situation, the amount of average daily traffic volume that's being produced at the speed limit that's going to be enforced is not required.
I do have another concern, and before I ask this question, regardless of whether you or Mr. Schropshire is asking it, I will just ask as a courtesy to the public that you speak into the mic a little better if you can. I'm having some trouble here hearing you, so...
I apologize.
No, it's okay, just wanted to bring that to your attention. The question I had, again, whether it's best suited for you or for your colleague, Mr. Schropshire, along Madison Avenue here, so I see there's already this existing crosswalk, which is sort of, you know, smacked at in the middle of the picture, the plan provided on page seven of the packet. There's been some moderate adjustments among the board here, and I would like to hear your thoughts or the applicant's thoughts, at the very least about pursuing permits, assuming they're feasible, to add a couple more crosswalks especially as you get closer to the entrance to Lot B. On the southbound side of it, you have this entrance over here, and presumably, just based on how the parking lot is configured relative to the hospital, you've got to imagine a lot of that foot traffic. It's not, a lot of these people, as it's currently configured, are not going to be patient and go all the way down to go across that crosswalk as it's currently mapped. Would you, would the applicant be willing to add additional crosswalks because it's county roads, so we'd have to talk, you'd have to sort that out with county, but additional crosswalks, it's at its entrance here to Lot D, and then also, if possible, another one up top near the intersection of Madison and Cedar Street?
I'm just showing the team what you're...
Absolutely.
You're referring to the crosswalk, or to propose a crosswalk where Lot B meets the new visitor parking Lot C? That's one of the areas.
That's one or two, so there's the one that's currently mapped is where Madison Avenue is, Madison Avenue is right across the middle. We're proposing two, actually. So one would be where the entrance to Lot B intersects with Madison Avenue, and then, yeah, so Mr. Bailey will help point it out, and then another at the intersection of Madison and Cedar.
Here's an existing lane, so there, I don't know, something here from this end, because people do not walk here, they all go, like, so a crosswalk here and maybe one here? If they don't think that's needed, but more importantly, like one here. Well, a crosswalk from, across the street, but that's...
If there is an issue with drivers...
Paul, you can say your name and address for the record.
Louis Lopez, 98 Levers Drive.
Mr. Lopez, you swear not to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. My first question, is there going to be any approval for a level four or five level containment, for example, like the Ebola virus, the L.A. fever? Do we have like more improvement in that section?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what type of approvals you're talking about.
Like I said, you have more protocol, more room in case you have a flood of people with a high contagious...
It's just more inpatient rooms to make all the rooms in all the sections of the hospital private, going from shared rooms to private rooms. So same treatments that are offered there now, just more rooms.
And second is, do I have more solar panels on the new building?
No.
Why not?
We could speak to that.
So I could speak to that. There are a multitude of reasons why. It does pose a fire hazard. Our insurance carrier does not like it on top of a hospital building. There are a number of reasons. On this particular building, which we testified to earlier, the top of this building is mechanical space. We can't put solar panels on top of mechanical space either.
Okay, I think I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And just so I didn't remind, I've been recording this video of 100% coverage. If anyone will have a copy, it'll be uploaded tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please, Mr. Lopez. Let me get to the podium, please, say your name and address for the record. Nick Sodano, Mount Holly reporter, 47 Garden Street.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, what was your name?
Nick Sodano.
47 Garden Street?
Yes.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before the word?
I did. I just wanted to say thank you to all the professionals that showed up for Virtua. You guys did a great job, really did, and our professionals too, thank you. Really thorough. There's only one issue that I have a problem with, and I don't see it getting used off here tonight, but I'll bring it up anyway. I don't want to see the footprint of a hospital getting any bigger, and this is all about the whole thing with nonprofits and our tax base. And it seems to me you did a great job with the infiltration in your parking spaces, but they're all ground level. And we did speak about it the last time you guys had a meeting, how much it would cost to do a parquet, and very expensive, but it seems to me that if you need more space to build in the future, and I know you can't, because you said so, you can't really predict what will happen in the future if you might expand because some other hospital does something. You've got all these round-level spots, you could maybe then build the parquet, and what I'm specifically wanting to suggest is that that parcel, 27-seater, once you're done with it, with the construction, and it's heard, I believe you said that there's no plans to expand into that area, that you could de-restrict that to not have any building in there, and that way, that would increase the resilience of our, I mean, not increase, but it would keep it stable. Mount Holly's built out, there's way too much impervious surface. So it's a suggestion I have, I don't expect it to happen, but I just wanted to put it out there. So, okay. Please, Mr. Sodano, please.
I can respond to that. When we had our community meeting, I was slightly misquoted there. We do have changes in healthcare, was my point. I can't predict five, 10 years from now. Healthcare is ever-changing, our technology is ever-changing. Those were the statements that I made. I cannot guarantee any expansion or not expansion of this hospital 10, 20 years, 50 years from now. We did comment furthermore on impervious coverage. If we are then prompted to build structured parking, that's an entirely different matter if we add square footage to this facility at some juncture in the future. That was also stated at that community meeting. Finally, as far as the 27-seater, that was also proposed. I yes said multiple times, which there is no plan for 27-seater, we testified tonight what our plans are. That is the extent of our plan. I am not putting a de-restriction on the property, it would not be prudent for me to do so as a property owner at this time. I cannot, again, cannot tell what the future holds for that particular property, we just have not vetted anything out that far. This is the intent for the property at the moment, and then to restore it. Thank you.
Moving to the second row. Let's reach the podium, please, say your name and address for the record.
Jeff Ebersmeyer, 203 Broad Street.
You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do. I have a lot of questions. The hospitals come to town, and a number of years ago, they needed more room for possible expansion, and unfortunately, they took properties in Mount Holly and built, and really maintain the properties, sort of their thoughts. I mean, if you look at it now, it really isn't the most beautiful thing, and we looked at it for years. And then the hospital's going to abandon this and go to West Hampton, they bought a large property there, and they were going to, I don't know what they were going to do with this one, but they were going to build this brick complex, which didn't work it, yeah. I really don't know what their plans are in the future, and I understand why they wouldn't want to de-restrict or, because I know 27-seater goes all the way down behind Madison Ave, down to Washington Street, there's many acres there that would be buildable or expandable, and I don't know what their long-term plans might be. I don't understand why they're going down ridge to put their remote parking when they own how many acres?
How many acres are 27-seater?
Cedar. There's a lot of acres.
Three, three now.
I thought it went all the way down to Washington Street, right?
No, it's three now.
The only reason we have a hard time believing is because I was involved when the hospital tore down all those houses to build that center across the street from the hospital, and those big, torn houses all got torn down. And we actually stopped and they moved one house to Cedar. And I happened to have the pleasure, one of our former attorneys had bought that house, and he brought me in, because I'm a mini antique dealer, and showed me what a fine job he'd done with restoring it. Carriage house to house, it was beautiful inside, he was so proud of it. That was a number of years ago, and now I found out, when they started communicating with the township, this house that was in disrepair and had to be torn down right away, like, there was no public comment. I mean, we spent a lot of money saving that house and moving that house, and the hospital just deemed it a piece of junk that had to be disposed of, not giving any public notice, no respect to the neighbors or the neighborhood, and as we all know, the neighbors were all upset about this. I don't think the hospital cared too much about it, because they said it was in disrepair. I beg to differ, because I actually was in the house, it couldn't have got that bad that fast. Maybe I'm wrong. So there's things that they do, and we're looking at what they're building. How does this building improve the life of the residents of Mount Holly? We're not gaining beds. The worst thing at that hospital is the emergency room. They're making, as she said, they're making no efforts at the emergency room. That's where most of people in Mount Holly get their cares, in the emergency rooms. We're building, you know, beds, we're building operation rooms, we're doing all this other stuff, but the real focus, if you listen to anybody who goes to that hospital, their biggest thing is the emergency room, the wait time, and what a mess it is. So I don't see any improvements to that. I don't understand why we're not improving the emergency room, along with building these beds and these OR bars and all this other stuff. So I have a lot of problems. Like, what are they doing for the residents? I hear all these things about easy access, employees' parking, all that stuff. And same with lighting, how does it affect the residents? Is the lighting encroaching upon the residences still live over there? Security? I didn't hear anything really about security cameras in there for protection of the...
Parked on the street, and it's permanent parking on it. Don't I think it's smart enough to park in the right direction on the street? You know, and I don't see, the young lady here from the hospital, she says they have a shuttle service. And I think that's a great idea, but why don't they enforce it with the employees and anybody else that parks there? And the gentleman over here that did the estimate on the parking, I don't think he's right. I lived there, I'm retired, all I had to do was look out the window and watch the dog. I saw a lady sitting across the street with a thumb camera, counting cars as they went by, one day. There's seven days in a week, every day is different. Some days you can go down that street and you'll see 50 cars, other days you'll see one car. What I want to know is who's going to enforce it? I've called the hospital people, the security guards, and they don't want to do nothing. I've called Mount Holly Police Department, hell, on a first-name basis, we've lost them. And if you look in the parking lot, I can almost guarantee you, there's going to be at least one car six rows in that has been stolen and has been sitting there for six months. I've told the security people about that. You look at it, you can see the ignition busted out of the steering column, and it hasn't moved in six months. I'm all for progress, but you've got to take care of what you've got first before you can move on. And I don't see the parking lot and this other parking lot where they're supposed to shuttle people, why aren't they doing it now? And if they are, why are there still people parking on the streets and going to my house and on South Ave? Oh, not South Ave, but South Springs. And like I said, I don't do well with politics and religion, but I'm not stupid, and I can see this isn't going to work the way they had it planned. And when you do the building, all the pipes in the neighborhood, my house was built in 1955, all the groundwater pipes and the sewer pipes are all steel and gas-dyed. Every year, at least once or twice, you see a truck or truck come down, and the vibrations will break the pipes. I know underneath the parking lot, that the old parking lot, I know there's still water lines and stuff in there. If those pipes... If those pipes break from the construction, all the stuff on Jefferson Avenue, who's going to be responsible for it? I live on a fixed income. I have the insurance, but I still have to pay for it. And I agree with progress, but you've got to take care of the people around the place. Thank you for listening.
Please, Mr. Sodano. Is there anyone else in the third row? I don't see any, so fourth row, is there anyone in the fourth row who'd like to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the fourth row and the fifth row. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on this application? Anybody just pointing, please give your name and address for the record.
Warren Taylor, Four Hundred Seventh Grand Street. Captain London, very long day.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And Warren, Four?
Warren, A, R, I, N, E, St. Lawrence.
Twenty-seven branch?
One, one, seven.
One, one, seven.
One, one, day. Just quickly, I want to say it was a great presentation. I've not been in this town for twenty-four years. We relocated here when the most great board is here.
Can you speak a little bit closer to you?
I said I want to say it was a great presentation. I am not going to expansion, but it was a great presentation. I do have my agreements where I'm agreeing here with Nick Sodano, I'm agreeing with Jeff. As far as Twenty-Seven Cedar, I understand your point, you said that you see nothing in the future. When I first started coming back to meetings, this lady here was saying how she had already went through this twenty or thirty years ago. So I can only assume, with you guys holding on to Twenty-Seven Cedar, in the next twenty or thirty years, when I'm seventy, I'll still be sitting here in these council meetings and it'll be a new generation of people trying to have a new expansion on the hospital. The issues that I have that I want to bring to, everyone's going to vote, probably going to vote. This world is about money and power anyway. So first I wanted to ask about, I didn't hear anybody say anything about the fire situation. How are you implementing it within my town? Because I believe Mount Holly is going to respond? Or it's going to be West Hampton, Mount Holly? We contract out with West Hampton. So is that going to be a fee for us? We already, they charge us what, like three, five thousand dollars a pole? So how is that going to implement into the hospital for the construction people that they have to have? Is that going to be a cost to the residents? Just, I don't know, I didn't hear anything about fire. And heard a little bit about police, but I didn't hear anything about fire. The other thing is the traffic. I live on Five Thirty-Seven, which is the same exact road that this hospital is on. Comes Five Thirty-Seven into Garden, which turns to Mount Holly and back to Madison, which turns, which is the county road. I live on the county road. I've been battling with the county for almost four years about truck traffic. I sit in front of my house right now while I'm still unemployed, okay? And I sit there with my clicker and I click, how many trucks go by? You're talking about tri轴. My whole house is shaking. And it's like this gentleman testified, I have lived in that house for five years. I have lived in Mount Holly for twenty-five years. And I've had a flood almost twice a year because of trucks in my house shaking in my basement with my ejector pump. So I truly understand the fact that your people are talking about when they say this is astronomical, we're talking about truck traffic and truck damage. I didn't hear anybody say, maybe I missed it. I didn't hear anyone say about the, you say you're going to do this with the sidewalks and this and that. But anybody going to fix the street once the trucks finish tearing it up? Winter is here. So two years of winter and salt, what are we going to do about the street? Madison is not the best already. So what are we doing about the street? Are you guys going to fix the street after you finish this in two years? You're going to fix it every year from now to twenty twenty-nine? Or you're just going to just dog up the street some more and then fix it in twenty twenty-nine and everything is over? So I'm just curious about that.
Quit speaking, you're close to.
The other thing is, I was very, it was lovely to hear about the three hundred and, I think, thirty-six trees that I believe you said was going to be between Atlantic and Cedar. So since it's going to be dedicated to Mount Holly, are we putting any Holly trees in? It's dedicated to Mount Holly, are we going to put a Holly tree in there maybe? And what's the alternative listing of these trees since Cedar and Atlantic are so hard to come by? Are we just only finding out that these trees are hard to come by? Because this already should have been written into the plan as far as what these alternative trees are? This is the Garden State. I don't understand that people, that's sloppy. When everything you guys got going on here on point, that's just really sloppy, really sloppy. Also glad to hear about the birthing blast. Very appreciative of that also. As far as the excavation, shallow excavation, that's the word that we use, by God. This is New Jersey, this is South Jersey. You're talking about shallow excavation. When they built that college over there, they found an aqueduct. That's, that's not that deep in the ground, guys, come on. They found a whole aqueduct. I just came to town when they found that thing. They shut that project down, I think, for almost two or three years. So when you say shallow, it's a nice adjective that you want to describe it, but with shallow excavation comes a lot of other problems, a lot of problems. Vibration problems, you know, site problems. This is New Jersey, this area right here, we're having rising, rising and flooding. It's constant the last few years. I don't know, that's, I don't know, guys, I don't know. I think that was it. Let me make sure I get all my notes here. The traffic, oh, the parking, yes, we all want a parking. So the parking, I think your estimate, I'm tired and I'm hungry. It says, I think you said it was going to be maybe one hundred sixty-three net increase of parking spaces with the E D. Do we have a differentiation of how many E D spaces? And are they going to, you said they're going to be scattered about. So I'm going to hypothetically assume maybe two, three, or three. And you said one sixty-three is going to be a net increase. So I guess my question is, with the parking, which I think someone else already said it, as we watch Cooper build higher and higher, beautiful, gigantic concrete parking lots like the ones I grew up in New York City, but I guess Virtua is not, at this point, does not have that in their plan. So with the parking, it's easy to say it's only going to be one hundred sixty-three net. But if you're not going to make it now, like the gentleman said, if you're not monitoring now the employees who are taking up the street parking, where are the people going to park? With the construction people, that's a hundred people that's going to come into this town who don't live here because they're not walking. So they're going to come where they park. Are they going to park at the train, the train, what is that place for you guys? Where they have to get the environment cleaned up? Train wreck, are they going to park over there? There's a whole lot over there, right? There's an abandoned lot behind the park store, the park store. Am I going to be walking around town and see cars parked there? Because I don't see we're going to put a hundred people that are going to be still training here parking unless they're going to be taking up Elders Parking in the daytime when they're off to their appointments, they're going to come home and they have to go to park. But otherwise, thank you, everyone.
Moving on. Is there anyone else who wants to talk about town and county speciality? Please, enjoy the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kate Upegg. I'm at Forty-four Landing Street in Lumberton, right by, right by the creek.
Excuse me, do you live in Lumberton?
I do.
Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And the board's referencing somebody who lives out of town unless they're associated with the site. They don't really have an interest in the development, which is free to make their comments.
We do have some in Lumberton that is affected by this, correct? Yes. So my concern is, I live right by the creek, and my concern is flooding and also snow removal, and how we're going to deal with that and deal with any water runoff, not only during construction, but after construction. I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, can you speak in the microphone?
Yeah. Were there any feasibility studies done regarding flooding? How it was going to affect the creek? Snow removal, how are we going to handle that, the logistics of that? I'm concerned about the creek, as everyone knows, there's been a huge flood in Lumberton. We flood every few years. Mount Holly, it seems, also has an issue, so just a concern I have. And also, I understand this is not part of your current plan, but in the future, which you can't predict, it looks like you're moving towards possibly leveling as a trauma center, which will of course bring more traffic and other issues.
Good thinking, Mr. Sodano. Is there anyone else who'd like to talk or comment on this application? Give it to the microphone, please, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Amber Kovravas. I'm at One Hundred Madison Avenue.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before the word?
Yes, I do. So first I'll open with kind of what I've said at each stage of this is that I don't have any fundamental opposition to this. I think moving to private rooms, of course, is the way to go. Covid, et cetera, et cetera, this is, this is what we need. And I think it's great that we do have a local hospital. And so at no point have I tried to be kind of like oppositional to this. But I do live right across the street. And I just keep feeling that during the stages of this, I have some concerns and sometimes don't feel like things are really as straightforward as they should be. And I'm not sure if the board could correct me if I'm wrong, but with NJSA forty fifty-five D, I live within two hundred feet of the property. And my understanding is I should have been served with notice with at least ten days prior to this board meeting. If that's the case, I would like the board to just know that I did not receive ten days' notice. I received certified mail Wednesday afternoon, so less than a week ago. And this other part is not on the, is not the fault of the applicant. However, when in the letter it says that some of the details of this plan are in the township building, I'm not served notice until Wednesday afternoon. The town building is only open nine to three on Thursday and closed on Friday.